Patay ako nito.
Meron man ipaano. Kaya na ano yah, kaya ako sublogan.
Eh paparehan mo.
Thank you, thank you for talking to me. Oo, nakaka-sipain sa iyo. Ay.
Oo, may ano?
Yes. Na ako maganda. Hindi ka pa na, limo sa pag-adjun mo pa lang sa mga babayan.
Session is full to order. Please rise for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Please remain standing for the singing of National Anthem.
Bayang magigil, peras ang silang anan. Alag ng puso sa tipit moy buhay. Lubang hiniram, guyan ka ng magiging. Sa manlulupin, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoyan, sa langit ng totoh. May hilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap ng wata at moy kamupay na rapihikin. Ang pituwing na paraw niya kaylan, ang payman dinilin. Luban ang maraw ng war, ang ito si ka. Uyay labi sa tipit. Aning lika yan, napak paymanati. At lama tay na't narin sayo.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for few minutes.
Session suspended.
Marisana. Eto, eto? Eto? Eto yun?
Reference of Christmas.
Say, meron man, hindi di pa patay rolo.
Ah. Okay. And then more.
Dula't daw mo ma. Dula'kin na ka dula, kasa'n dula, dili? Huh? Shokin mo na daw mo. Tegan-tegan mo sa'yo mapapush. March five, two. Tignan. Aktiban sa ano?
Bata.
Suwala. Makai-score ka na.
Oo, pati si ano. Oo, matanda. Saka... Parepina in ang... Miss Pino's. Yung gawin nung bingdi. Gusto lang.
Thank you.
Kilan gos. Tid galawa. Rekon kase. Okay.
Oh nga, lakit ka daw.
Hello, Kong.
Okay.
Puta, bukod nung makinu't tay ko.
Ipadaw. Ah, ipadaw.
Speak for you. I know, I know, I know. I know, I know.
There are no sponsors.
Go number two.
Oi, oi!
Sessions resume. adjourned.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is so directed.
Roll call of members. Honorable representatives. Abante. Abaya. Abel Janosa. Abu. Abueg Zaldivar. Abunda. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Advinkula. Agabas. Agarau. Aglipay. Aginaldo. Albano. Almario. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Henaro. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amantematba. Amatong. Andaya. Angara. Aragonés. Arbison. Arenas. Arroyo. Atienza. Cimentado. Babasa. Bagatzing. Balindong. Banyas Nograles. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barzaga. Bascuk. Bautista. Bautista Bandigan. Belmonte. Benitez. Bernos. Biazon. Miliones. Pirón. Bolilia. Bondok. Ordado. Bravo. Rosas. Bulot. Bustos. Kabatbat. Cabochan. Cabredo. Cagas. Calderon. Calixto. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kawagdan. Kari. Castelo. Castro Franz. Castro Fredenil. Cayetano Alan Pedro Compañero. Cayetano Mariano La Arne. Celeste. Chato. Chipeco. Chungalau. Co Angelica. Co Elizaldi. Co Wanko. Coliantes. Crisologo. Kuwa. Kuaresma. Cueva. Col Yamat. Dagogo. Dalipe. Dalob. Datol. Taza. De Jesus. De Venetia. Defender Lawrence. Defender Michael. Delmar. De Los Santos. De Los Montalle. Demaporo Abdullah. Demaporo Mohamed Khalid. Duavit. Du Hali. Duterte. Di Faustino Ino. Di Faustino Michael III. Di Ian Paul. Epcas. Ecleyo. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Ergel. Ermita Buhain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrelia. Fariñas Ria. Fariñas Rudy Caesar. Fernandez. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Frasco. Fuente Belia. Caite. Garbin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Garin Janet. Garin Sharon. Gas Sataya. Gachal Yan. Gato. Heron. Go Ed. Go Mark. Gonzaga. Gonzales Aurelio Dong. Gonzales Neptali. Gonzales Carlo. Guraceta. Gico. Gulyas. Guya. Jaresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Hofer. Halushos. Javier. Jimenez. Co Elisa. Co Wilton. Kong Hun. Labad Labad. Laxon. Laxon Noel. Lagman. Lagon. Lara. Lazatin. Lechon. Legarda. Lim. Lim Kaitchong. Lopez. Loyola. Losotan. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Mangawang. Magundadato. Marcoleta. Mariano Hernandez. Mariño. Marquez. Martínez. Matba. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Momo. Natividad Naganyo. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nograles Jerko. Nograles Juan Fidel. Nolasco. Núñez Malanyaon. Huaminal. Olivares. Ong Jose. Ong Roni. Ortega. Uanodison. Pacquiao Alberto. Pacquiao Rojelli. Pajernos. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panotes. Peña. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Puno. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramires Sato. Ramos. Remulia. Rivilla. Reyes. Rivera. Robes. Rodríguez. Roman. Romero. Romualdes Ferdinand. Romualdes Yedamarí. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Sacdalan. Sagarbaria. Sacaluran. Salceda. Salimbangon. Salo. Sanchez. Sang Copán. Santos Recto. Sarmento. Saulup. Savelliano. Xau. Silverio. Singson. Singson Mijan. Sinzuat. Suansing Estridita. Suansing Horacio. Suarez Aleta. Suarez David. Suntay. Si Alvarado. Taduran. Talliado. Tambunting. Tan Eliza. Tan Angelina. Tan Shamir. Tan Sharri. Tan Shurni. Tejada. Teves Arn. Teves Arnulfo. Teves José. Tianco. Tolentino. Torres Gómez. Pulfo. Tupaz. Chutor. Ti Alan. Ti Diego. Umali Alfonso. Umali María Victoria. Unavia. Ungab. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Valeriano. Val Mayor. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Veloso. Vergara. Villa. Villa Fuerte. Villanueva Brother Eddie. Villanueva Noel. Villar. Villarasa Suarez. Villa Rica. Violago. Yap Eric. Yap Victor. Yu. Zamora Ronaldo. Zamora Waikorat. Zarate Zubiri. Mr. Speaker. The roll call shows that 211 members responded to the call.
With 211 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, the gentleman from... The Honorable Atienza is recognized.
The secretary announced the presence of 211. Our count now, and our people counting by the second, is only 127. I'd like to ask the secretary. Where is the balance of members that he's count... that they're counting present when they are not around? And physical presence is necessary to claim presence in the session. And the rules are very clear. No quorum. We should not hold a session, nor take up any matter and business for the day.
Majority Leader will please respond to the query of the Honorable Atienza.
Mr. Speaker, that is correct. According to our rules, that if there is no quorum, we cannot conduct business for today. Let me point out, Mr. Speaker, that we have also a rule in... a section in our rule, which provides for those members who are deemed to be present and... Let me check the rule, Mr. Speaker. One moment, please. May I apologize, Mr. Speaker, for the delay. May I quote from Section 71 of Rule 11, that on the second paragraph, "While the House is in session, the following shall be deemed present: Letter A, Members who are attending committee meetings as authorized by the Committee on Rules in accordance with Section 35 hereof, upon written notification to the Secretary General by the concerned committee secretary." Letter B, Members who are attending meetings of: Number one, the Commission on Appointments, the House of Representatives, Electoral Tribunal, and the Bicameral Conference Committee. And letter C, The Members who are on official mission as approved by the Speaker. With that, Mr. Speaker, let me... allow me, please, to state that, as of today, we have 12 members of the House who are attending the Commission on Appointment Meeting. We have four on official travel and a foreign travel. We have three members who are on official local travel. We have six members who are on a special meeting in the Taal Rehab. We have six Public Information Committee Meeting, which is... which was authorized by the Committee on Rules. And we have 10 members who are attending the Committee on Amendments, Constitutional Amendments, also approved by the Committee on Rules. And we have two members on a special committee on the Persons with Disability Committee, also approved prior to the conduct of the roll call by the Committee on Rules.
Mr. Speaker.
Does that answer the query of the Honorable Atienza?
No, simply because I added all the qualifications of the Majority Leader and those they are considering present. They only amount to a total of 171. The secretary had certified a 211 present on the floor or present somewhere. So they're still all by 40 at least. And the key word, Mr. Presiding Officer, is authorization. May we be enlightened as to the authority of those who are not around and are being considered present? They have to be authorized. Sinu sino po ba'to? Ano po ba ang kanilang meeting na pinupuntahan? At sabihin po nila, ipakita sa'min ngayon, I'm willing to check the documents myself if they have an authority to do just that.
I think the Majority Leader has already declared that the Majority Leader has authorized these members to attend the meetings.
Mr. Speaker, we will be glad to provide the copy of the authorization letter to the Honorable Atienza.
Indeed, indeed. He said authorized. That's why we would like to see the authority.
Yes, the Majority Leader has indicated that he will provide the Honorable Atienza a copy of the authority.
Then before we even start the session, we would like to see the authority that he has been mentioning.
What is the nature of the motion? Is that a motion?
We would like to move for a suspension for a few minutes while we check the authority.
I join, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended. Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Atienza is recognized.
Yes. Yesterday, we did not constitute a quorum simply because members were not on the floor. And no explanation was given, except to say they were meeting outside and meeting in the committees. But today, that's the very reason why we are citing the same rule that they implemented yesterday. And the rules are very clear on attendance and the requirement for a quorum before any business of the day is taken up. That compels us to really follow only one rule: yesterday, today, and tomorrow. The Majority Leader has already presented the authorities given to those who are not around. And we would like to remind the Majority Leader that we shall be doing this every day of session simply because we should learn how to follow the rules. Otherwise, we cannot tackle any business of the day in sanity, fairness, and transparency. Yeah. I'm withdrawing on having objection today. But we will keep on citing the same rule that they implemented yesterday from here on. Thank you.
The withdrawal is noted and the comments of the Honorable Atienza are noted. Majority Leader.
I would like to thank the Honorable Atienza, Mr. Speaker, for pointing out the rules. And we shall abide by the rules of the House. With that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 41 dated February 10 and Journal Number 42 dated February 11, copies of which were already distributed to the members. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Sagarbaria. They are Mr. Edgar Logronio, the leader of Smoke Free Operation in Domagata City Administrator's Office; Mr. Ronaldo Logronio; Mr. Walito Logronio; and Mrs. Patria Logronio.
The guests of the Honorable Sagarbaria will please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to also greet the guests of the Honorable Hector Sanchez of Lone District of Catanduanes. They are from South Korea, visitors from Olive Mountain Corporation Limited; Mr. Hang Won Lee; Gong Yun Jung; Yun Sung Huang; and Jung Yul Baek.
The guests of the Honorable Hector Sanchez are recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to greet the guests of the Honorable Vergara from the 3rd District of Nueva Isija. They are the board members of the 3rd District of the Province of Nueva Isija; the Honorable Jojo Matias; Pastor Raki Hipolito; Pastor Arnold Pascual; Mr. Anthony de la Vega; Mr. Joel Ubaldo; and Mr. Ricky Mariano.
The guests of the Honorable Rosana Vergara are recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives and thank you for your visit.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to greet also the guests of the Honorable Romeo Momo. They are the delegates of the Vice Mayor's Leagues of the Philippines from the Surigao del Sur chapter; Honorable Eleanor Momo of Tandag City; Honorable Libertad Almeida of San Agustin, the mayor of San Agustin; Honorable Rolmar Basalan of San Miguel; Honorable Jovita Umapas of Marihatag; Honorable Mamerta Milo of San Agustin; Honorable Reynaldo Celades of Tago; the Honorable Apolonio Lozada of Bayabas; the Honorable Elmer Evangelio of Lingig; the Honorable Philip Orquia of Madrid; Saguian members Honorable Alfred Pérez of San Miguel; Honorable Alex de Guzmán of San Miguel; Honorable Sebastian Campos Jr. of San Miguel; Honorable Nicolas Alicante of San Miguel; Honorable Roberto Leyson of San Miguel... Sorry, San Agustin; Honorable Charlo Campos of San Agustin; Honorable Santiago Lamela of San Agustin; Honorable Mario Pontilio of San Agustin; Honorable Jolina Patinungan of San Agustin; the Saguian Pangdungsooth Secretary Marina Quizon of Tandag City; Maria Cruz of Marihatag; the Saguian members of Marihatag Honorable El Pijo Lamela; Honorable Bonifacio Rivas; Honorable Francisco Awa; Honorable Leonardo Tomalon Jr.; Honorable Olympiades Gómez; and the Saguian members of Lianga; the Honorable Chival Elimanco; Honorable Jumar Vocales; Honorable Esmeralda Elimanco; and the SWA staff Attorney Donna Marie Trinidad; and the VMLP staff Mary Joy Ure.
The guests of the Honorable Romeo Momo are recognized. Thank you for your visit and welcome to the House of Representatives.
Likewise, Mr. Speaker, I would like to greet the guests of the Honorable Edgar Chato, the board member of the 1st District of Bohol Honorable Ricky Masamayol.
The guest of the Honorable Edgar Chato is recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up the reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the Measures on First Reading as well as Communications and Resolutions. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the title of the bills on first reading.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill Number 6217, Providing for the Full and Effective Implementation and Enforcement of the Internal International Maritime Instruments of which the Philippines is a State Party. Representative González Sandro Losotan Enduterte.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 6219, Granting the Secretary of Health Powers to set maximum prices for medically necessary assistive equipment and medical supplies. Representative Salceda.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 6220, Providing for the Establishment of a Technical Education and Skills Development Center in Malabo-Pahibato located in the 2nd District of Davao City. Representative Garcia Vincent.
Committee on Higher Education and Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 6221, Codifying the Alternative Child Care Laws. Representative Tan Eliza.
Committee on Welfare Children.
House Bill Number 6223, Granting Educational Benefits in the Form of Scholarship Grants to the Orphaned Children of Uniformed Government Personnel Killed in the Line of Duty. Representative Lara.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 6224, Providing for Dormitories or Housing Quarters for Teachers Teaching in Far-flung Areas, Last Mile Schools, and SUCs. Representative Lara.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture and Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 6225, Providing for the Development and Construction of Potable Water Supply Systems in Every barangay All Throughout the Country Within Three Years. Representative De Los Santos.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 6226, Creating a Department of Ocean Fisheries and Aquatic Resources. Representative Kabatbat.
Committee on Government Reorganization and Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill Number 6229, Establishing the 1st District Engineering Office in San Carlos City, Negroes Occidental. Representative Val Mayor.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 6230, Converting the Municipality of Naval in the Province of Beliran into a Component City to be known as the City of Naval. Representative Espina.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 6231, Creating Mechanisms to Augment and Support the Teaching Workforce. Representative Salceda.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 623226234, Declaring Tourist Destinations in Certain Municipalities of the Province of Ilocos Norte. Representatives Fariñas Ria and Fariñas Rudy Caesar.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill Number 6235, Converting a Portion of Land embraced under Proclamation Numbers 508 and 532 as alienable and disposable to the actual bona fide occupants. Representative Roman.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill Number 6236, Creating the Philippine Boxing and Combat Sports Commission. Representative Olivares.
Committee on Government Reorganization and Committee on Games and Abusements.
House Bill Number 6237, Reorganizing the Council for the Welfare of Children into the Philippine Commission on Children. Representative Olivares.
Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill Number 6238, Instituting a National Dam Safety Program. Representative Dalipe.
Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill Number 6239, Increasing the Personal Economic Relief Allowance of Public School Teachers. Representative De Los Santos.
Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill Number 6240, Establishing the Economic Zone in Freeport in the Province of Southern Late. Representative Mercado.
Committee on Economic Affairs and Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill Number 6241, Providing for the Establishment of a TESTA Training and Accreditation Center in Montalban Rodriguez Rizal. Representative Nogralis Wan.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 6242, Creating a Barangay to be known as Barangay Apan in Jumalig Quezon. Representative Inverga.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 6243, Strengthening the Powers of the Philippine Competition Commission and Legislating the National Competition Policy. Representative Garin Sharon.
Committee on Economic Affairs.
Resolutions. House Resolution 703, Directing the NEDA to Identify the LGUs committed to attaining the Sustainable Development Goals and recommend to the House Committee on Sustainable Development for the Purpose of Granting Congressional Commendation. Representative Demaporo Kalit.
To the Special Committee on Sustainable Development Goals.
House Resolution 704, Calling for an Inquiry to Determine if there was malfeasance, misfeasance, or nonfeasance on the implementation of the Metro Manila Skyway Stage 3. Representative De La Santos.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 504, Directing the Committee on Agriculture and Food to Inquire on the Implementation of Quarantine Procedures by the DA and the Inspection of the Cold Storage Warehouses and Container Vans, which are possible sources of the outbreak of the African Swine Fever in the country. Representative Unabia.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 706, Urging all major public and private establishment to install thermal scanners in order to detect any potential carrier of the 2019 Novell Coronavirus. Representative Castillo.
Committee on Health.
Communications. 2018 Annual Report of the Philippine National Volunteer Service Coordinating Agencies.
Committee on People's Participation.
Letter dated January 29, 2020, Benjamin Ijokno, Governor, BSP, Submitting their Report to Congress on Public Sector Foreign Loans Approved by the BSP in the Fourth Quarter of 2019 and the Entire Year.
Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Letters dated January 29, 2020 and February 4, 2020, Ojjanis G. Ayson Zales, Deputy Director, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, BSP, Furnishing the House with duly Certified and Authenticated BSP Issuances.
Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports. Report Number 227 of the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms on House Bill Number 6252.
Committee on Rules.
Report Number 2282230 of the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill Number 6254 and 26256.
Committee on Rules.
Resolution. House Resolution 511, Resolution honoring the heroism, courage, and great compassion of the 10-member Philippine Government Team that repatriated the distressed overseas Filipino workers in Wuhan City, epicenter of the outbreak of the COVID-19. Representative Kayatano Allen Peter Romualdes Ferdinand Enabante.
Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we continue consideration of House Bill Number 137 under Committee Report Number 154 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 137, An Act Imposing Stiffer Penalties for Child Abuse, Exploitation, and Discrimination, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 7610, as amended.
Mr. Speaker, our parliamentary status, the parliamentary status of the bill is that we are in the period of amendments. And with that, Mr. Speaker, there being no members wish to propose amendments and no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 137 under Committee Report Number 154. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection? Chair hears none. As many as are in favor of House Bill Number 137, please say aye. As many as are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 137 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we continue consideration of House Bill Number 78 under Committee Report Number 5 and would like to request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 78, An Act Providing for the Definition of Public Utility, Further Amending for the Purpose Commonwealth Act Number 146, Otherwise Known as the Public Service Act, as amended.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that we are in the period of interpolation. And having said that, I move that we recognize the Honorable Janet, I'm sorry, Sharon Garin of the Economic Affairs for her sponsorship.
The Honorable Sharon Garin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, to continue with the interpolation, I move that the gentleman from Albae, the Honorable Edsa Lagman, be recognized and be given 30 minutes to finish his interpolation. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Lagman is recognized for 30 minutes to finish his interpolation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the distinguished sponsor yield to further interpolation?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
What is the present applicable constitutional provision on the ownership, operation, control, and management of public utilities?
Mr. Speaker, that would be Section 11. Should you wish I could read it, no franchise, certificate, or any other form of authorization for the operation of public utilities shall be granted except to citizens of the Philippines or to corporations or associations organized under the laws of the Philippines, at least 60 per centum of whose capital is owned by such citizens. And to continue, the second paragraph states that "The state shall encourage equity participation in public utilities by the general public. The participation of foreign investors in the governing body of every public utility enterprise shall be limited to their proportionate share in its capital."
This provision, which, this provision is an almost verbatim restatement of the 1973 Constitution on the Ownership, Operation, Management, and Control of Public Utilities, and it is also a restatement of the 1935 Constitution. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
It is correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Now, are there any commonalities and variances in the provisions in the 1987, 1973, and 1935 Constitution on the Ownership, Operation, Management, and Control of Public Utilities? May we know whether there are similarities or differences in these provisions?
Mr. Speaker, if the good interpreter can allow me to my, to allow me to, to time to check the the exact provisions of the different constitutions.
Yes, distinguished sponsor, provided it will not be included in my time of 30 minutes.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, the, basically, the foreign equity limitation is present in each version of the Constitution. There are some differences, but it's the reference to the batasang pambansa and the like. So the foreign equity limitation is still there, Mr. Speaker.
That is correct, Mr. Speaker. There is no difference with respect to the mandate that public utilities must be owned by Filipino citizens or by corporations or associations. 60 per centum of the capital which are owned by Filipino citizens.
Basically, Mr. Speaker, the limitation, the 60% limitation is present. The non-exclusive nature, the franchise is also common among the versions and point, the franchise subject to amendment, alteration, repeal is also present in all the versions, Mr. Speaker.
That is correct, Your Honor, but those will not in any way dilute the provision that it should be Filipino owned or 60 per centum of the corporate capital must be owned by Filipinos.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, also, all the versions also do not really define public utility, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, may we know what is the principal reason in the 1935, 1973, and 1987 Constitution for reserving the ownership and operation of public utilities to citizens of the Philippines or to corporations where in 60 per centum of the capitalization is owned by Filipino citizens?
Mr. Speaker, the provision of all the constitution in the, regarding public utility is is simply a recognition of the vital role or the importance of what, of public utility in the day-to-day life of Filipinos and the importance, in the importance of it being protected by the protectionist idea of that it should, we should have control over it because these are vital, vital services that will affect the ordinary lives of Filipinos. Hence, we are provided. This is shown by the 60/40 limitation or the filipinization of public utilities, Mr. Speaker.
Additionally, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the Supreme Court in several cases gave the answer to that question on the reason why there is a need to have Filipino ownership of public utilities. In Express Investment Deterred Limited versus Bayante Inc., the Supreme Court held and echoed, "This provision explicitly reserves to Filipino citizens control over public utilities pursuant to overriding economic goal of the 1987 Constitution to conserve and develop our patrimony and ensure a self-reliant and independent national economy effectively controlled by Filipinos." Then, in Philippine National Oil Company versus Keppel Philippines Holding Inc., the Supreme Court also ruled that filipinization is the spirit that forbears the constitutional provisions on national patrimony and economy. The Constitution has reserved the ownership of public and private lands, the ownership and operation of public utilities, and certain areas of investment to Filipino citizens, associations, and corporations. Again, in Gambowa versus Tebes, the court declared that the legal and beneficial ownership of 60% of the outstanding capital stock must rest in the hands of Filipino nationals. May we know whether the distinguished sponsor is aware of these rulings and whether she agrees with these rulings?
Sir Speaker, I do agree that the cited jurisprudence by the good interpreter. And it is, it is, I do agree also in the protectionist idea when it comes to public utilities. But the current amendment, the current bill proposes a definition of public utilities. It is not to change the Constitution, but it is merely to define how we see or what to, how do we interpret public utility as it is now and also by, based on the 1987 deliberations of the Constitutional Commission. Moreover, Mr. Speaker, under the, under the, in the Constitution, there is, there, it is, the Constitution, the 1987 Constitution does not prohibit any foreign investment, foreign direct investment. It is protectionist in nature, but based on the Garcia versus Executive Secretary case ruled in 1991, it channels, it says, it channels efforts at promoting foreign investments to bigger enterprises where there is an acute, acute lack of Filipino capital. However, this should not be construed as a scheme to discourage Filipino enterprises from going into big enterprises. On the contrary, the scheme is for foreign investment to supplement Filipino capital in big enterprises. Hence, Mr. Speaker, I do believe that the proposal of the current bill that we are discussing is still consistent with the provision in the Constitution as well as the jurisprudence that has been cited by Congressman Lagman, Mr. Speaker.
May we know, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, whether that Garcia case, which was cited by the distinguished sponsor, refer to a public utility?
Sir Speaker, we are currently reviewing the jurisprudence. If you, the good interpreter can just allow us a few seconds to review.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, while the lawyers are reviewing the ruling of the Supreme Court, I would like to request the good interpreter if he can move on to the next question while we are waiting for the response, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I will go to my next question. What is the first law restating the constitutional provision on the ownership, operation, management, and control of public utilities being reserved to Filipinos?
Can you, can please restate the question, Mr. Speaker?
What is the first statute or law restating the constitutional provision on the ownership, operation, management, and control of public utilities being reserved to Filipinos?
What is the, even the legislation that, that reserves?
The first legislation implementing that constitutional provision.
Mr. Speaker, I am not familiar with the law that first required the sixty-forty limitation on, on whether public utilities or any, any investment in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
Well, it is actually the Public Service Act of 1936, which is sought to be amended or updated by the present bill. The distinguished sponsor has repeatedly said that the Public Service Act of 1936 is already ancient and has to be modernized. Does the distinguished sponsor recall her repeated statements on this matter?
Mr. Speaker, there has been no specific statements regarding the, whether it is obsolete or it is not applicable anymore to the current times, Mr. Speaker. But based on the different jurisprudence, as well as, as well as reading in the different, reading in a different legal reference books, as well as the Constitutional Commission, the basis of the amendment of the Public Service Act is to update it since every time and again, these jurisprudence have either added or subtracted the list from the list of public services, Mr. Speaker. So, what the proposal currently is, is not merely to add another service or, or remove another service from the definition of public service. It is, we have deemed it more prudent should we have a more permanent, reliable definition of what is public utility. By doing a list of what is public utility or what is a public service, this can change, but should we follow what we believe, we, we interpret as public utility or public service? This will stay and this, this will be static, unlike a list that will change over time in view of innovation, globalization, and the like, Mr. Speaker.
Well, I vividly recall, and I jotted it down, when the distinguished sponsor repeatedly stated that the Public Service Act of 1936 is already old and it has to be harmonized with the present situations, so it has to be modernized.
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker. In fact, this, it is not just, it is not just the definition of public utility that has been reviewed here. The penalties have always been, have also been updated since the penalties for infractions was just a mere 200 pesos per day or some of the provisions that have been, the reference to commission, which is non-existent anymore and it has been, there has been an amendment to change all reference to commissions to the regular, regulating agency. It just reflects that it has needed, it has been in need of updating for a long time already, Mr. Speaker. Hence, this, it is not, the concept, concept of the legislation is not totally obsolete, but it also needs updating, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if, with the indulgence of Congressman Lagman, in reference to the, the previous query, the, the jurisprudence cited did not deal with public utilities. It dealt with the constitutionality of foreign investments, not specifically public utility, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for that clarification, distinguished sponsor. Now, if the year of enactment will be the standard, the 1935 Constitution was ratified and enforceable one year earlier than the Public Service Act. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
But the provisions of the 1935 Constitution on the ownership, operation, management, and control of public utilities finds currency in the more updated 1973 Constitution and 1987 Constitution. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Do the constitutions of 1935, 1973, and 1987, as well as the Public Service Act, distinguish between public utility and public service?
Mr. Speaker, the public service, I do believe that the Constitution only refers to public utility and does not refer to public service in the specific section, section 11. Public Service Act, however, refers to public services. So, in some cases, hence for the confusion, jurisprudence or some regulating agencies or other resources have interchanged or differentiated the two concepts, Mr. Speaker. Hence, in this proposal, we have distinguished what is public utility, but it is safe to say that all public utilities are still public services, Mr. Speaker.
But just to be accurate about it, the Constitution itself, from 1935 to 1987, did not distinguish a public utility from a public service.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In fact, the concept of public service is subsumed under public utility because the principal feature of a public service is extending public service. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And traditionally, the concept of public utility and public service is interchangeable. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, to some extent, that some jurisprudence did do, did use it interchangeably. But there are also some jurisprudence that, that did not include a certain industry listed in the Public Service Act as a public service. Did not, they did not consider some of those as public utilities. For example, I, I have to review the notes, Mr. Speaker, but for example, the case of JG Summit, for example, Mr. Speaker.
Well, going to jurisprudence, the Supreme Court has held that in several cases, that public service is subsumed under public utility. And there is no definite or peculiar distinction between the two terms. So, a legislation which would differentiate public service from public utility may be offensive to the Constitution if under the bill, public service corporations can be owned totally by foreigners. Let me cite the jurisprudence. In Republic of the Philippines versus Manila Electric Company, the Supreme Court pronounced, and I quote, "The business and operations of a public utility are imbued with public interest. In a very real sense, a public utility is engaged in public service, providing basic commodities and services indispensable to the interest of the general public." Is the distinguished sponsor aware of this ruling and does she concord with said ruling?
Mr. Speaker, had, had the Constitutional Commission, I do believe the 1987 Constitution or the previous constitutions for that matter, had they intended to equate public service to public utility, then they would have stated public services since the Public Service Act has already been enacted or already in place at that time. Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, I, over the years, there has been changes in the list, not by amended, amendment of the Commonwealth Act 146 or the Public Service Act, by legislation as well as by jurisprudence. There has been industries or services that has been not considered as public utilities under, under the Public Service Act. Just to cite, Mr. Speaker, for example, in the NPC, National Power Corporation versus Provincial Government or Bataan, it was affirmed by the Supreme Court that power generation is no longer considered a public utility. But such is still, with, based on Commonwealth Act, Wealth Act 146, it's still a public service, Mr. Speaker. And there are a few more cases that are similar to this, based on some jurisprudence, Mr. Speaker. So, I would, I would still stand by the fact that, that a public utility was not considered, equated as public service by the Constitutional Commission because there has been so many changes over the years, Mr. Speaker.
But the fact is, the Constitution, including the 1987 Constitution, does not distinguish between public service and public utility. But let me ask the distinguished sponsor whether a public service is not a public utility?
A public ser, not all public services, Mr. Speaker, are public utilities. But all public utilities are public services, Mr. Speaker.
Now, is a common carrier or transportation firm a public service as well as a public utility?
Mr. Speaker, under the proposed measure, common carriers are excluded from the list of public utilities, Mr. Speaker, based on the criteria that we have set forth in the proposed bill, Mr. Speaker.
But is the distinguished sponsor asserting that a transportation corporation or a public carrier is not a public utility?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it is a public service, but it is not a public utility.
Why is it so?
Mr. Speaker, a public, a public utility, a, a common carrier currently, common carriers are our transportation service. In fact, for example, if we consider, for example, in air transport, it is not anymore a public utility because it has been, it is, competition is high in the public utilities. There is no monopoly within the airport, air transportation service. In land transportation, in fact, you can, you can choose from a taxi, a jeepney, train service. There are more options. So, this does not fall as a public utility. It is a public service, but it is not a public utility because it does not meet all the criteria that we have, we have drafted as a basis in determining a certain service or your, or industry as a public utility, Mr. Speaker.
Presently, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, are common carriers like land CNA transportation companies considered as public utilities? Presently?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Is competition in the industry a standard by which we should gauge whether a business is a public utility or a public service?
Based on our, the criteria that we have set forth in the House bill being considered today, yes, Mr. Speaker. There should be, there should be, just to clarify, that there should be a natural monopoly for it to be considered a public utility, Mr. Speaker.
In other words, competition in an industry is indicative of the absence or presence of a public utility?
This is one of the elements, Mr. Speaker, yes.
Yes, and those are one of the elements in the proposed bill, but presently, it is not.
Mr. Speaker, the composition of the elements are the composition of the elements or the variables that we have considered as essential for one industry to be considered as a public utility is not, uh, it is a, is a collation of different ideas that we have considered, considering the economic side, the legal side, and the historical side as well of the different industries. So by, by studying all the resources, whether it's jurisprudence, legislation, or legal sources, we have, we have drafted four criteria for a certain industry to meet in order for it to be considered as a public utility, Mr. Speaker. So it is not just a mere new idea that we have incorporated in the proposal, but this has been a collation of different sources for us to arrive at a certain more, a more definite and more permanent definition of what is a public utility, Mr. Speaker.
What is the historical dimension for which the distinguished sponsor is saying that common carriers are not anymore public utilities?
Mr. Speaker, per Commissioner Monsod of the 1986 Constitutional Commission, she said, and I quote, "Precisely, the nature of a public utility is that it is a natural monopoly. Otherwise, it would be too expensive for the country or, and for the consumers." In PONs, treated in the, this is a U.S. public utility law cited by the Supreme Court, by our Supreme Court, also states, "The furnishing of municipal public utility service is a natural monopoly, which is never accompanied by competitive conditions in theory and seldom so in practice." In Black's Law Dictionary, likewise maintains that public utility is always a monopoly, Mr. Speaker. So this has been, our references have been varied in coming up with the criteria that we have listed under the current bill, Mr. Speaker.
Well, the distinguished sponsor says that a public utility must be a natural monopoly. So what are these existing businesses which can be considered a natural monopoly?
Natural monopoly, in, we, we are currently, Mr. Speaker, actually proposing for clarification, that we include a description of what is a natural monopoly. For, for, a natural monopoly exists when market demand for a commodity or service can be satisfied by a single entity at the lowest cost than by two or more competitor entities. By, by considering this definition and considering the requirement that the public service is a natural monopoly for it to be a public utility, currently, it is electricity and water that falls under this. This will exclude telecommunications, transportation services from the list, or from, from being considered as public utilities, Mr. Speaker.
Presently, what are natural monopolies which would qualify as public utilities other than what you have said, provision for electricity?
Currently, there are, there's only transmission and distribution of electricity as well as water, air, and pipeline and sewage distribution. Those are the only industries that we consider. Historically, Mr. Speaker, if we look back in the PLDT before, before the arrival of mobile services and other, and, and entry of other companies, PLDT used to be a monopoly, it was a natural monopoly in a sense that it was the only player also in the industry. But, so it was considered, this would fall under public utility. But then, with the change of time and the increase in competition and, and not only is there landline service for telecommunications, but there's also mobile services and, and other, other types of telecommunications services. Today, as it is now, it cannot be considered a natural monopoly anymore, Mr. Speaker.
With respect to the provision for electricity, other than Miralco, are there other firms providing electricity in Metro Manila or nationwide or region wide?
Currently, Mr. Speaker, there are different companies offering distribution or transmission of electricity, but they have natural monopolies in their respective areas, Mr. Speaker.
No, transmission is different from provision of electric service?
Distribution.
Or distribution. There are, aside from Miralco, other firms engaged in the distribution of electricity?
In what we have seen is that there are companies, different companies, performing distribution of electricity, Mr. Speaker. It, however, these companies cater to different areas, Mr. Speaker.
So with respect to the distribution of electricity or providing electric service, there is actually no monopoly. Is that correct?
I would quali, oh, I would, in, in my opinion, Mr. Speaker, there is a monopoly because they have, they have monopoly in the areas that they serve. It would be too expensive to have two electric distribute, uh, distribution companies in the same area, Mr. Speaker.
When the 1935, 1973, and 1987 Constitution were ratified, what were the public utilities then considered existing and protected by the Constitution?
Mr. Speaker, in, over the years, there has been variation, but we could trace the history by starting with the Public Service Act, Mr. Speaker. The Public Service Act was enacted in 1936, I believe, and constitutions thereafter or the interpretation of the Constitution and application of the Constitution. Are some jurisprudence that involved the interpretation of what is public utility or public service has, some of it has made reference to Public Service Act. So it is basically the Commonwealth Act 146 that has been the reference of many of our jurisprudences. But in some jurisprudences, despite the reference, they have also altered some of the, they have also not recognized some industries that is in the list of the Public Service Act or the Commonwealth Act 146 as not public utilities, Mr. Speaker. So over the years, yes, the basic reference was the Public Service Act, but the, it has not been consistently followed because it's, it's a simple evolution of the time on how to treat certain industries because it changes over the years, Mr. Speaker.
Let me be more specific. When the 1935 Constitution was ratified, was the business of common carrier considered a public utility?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
When the same Constitution was ratified, was telecommunications corporations considered a public utility?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And this was the state of affairs when the 1972 Constitution as well as the 19 87 Constitution were ratified. These businesses were considered public utilities. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Let me go to the case of NAPOCor versus Court of Appeals. The Supreme Court held, and I quote, "A public utility is a business or service engaged in regularly supplying the public with some commodity or service of public consequence, such as electricity, gas, water, transportation, telephone, or telegraph service. The term implies public use and service." Is the, is the distinguished sponsor aware of this particular jurisprudence?
Yes, Mr.
And does he agree with this ruling?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In J, the JG Summit Holdings versus Court of Appeals, which was cited previously by the distinguished sponsor, the Supreme Court likewise ruled that, quote, "Simply stated, a public utility provides a service or facility needed for present-day living, which cannot be denied to anyone who is willing to pay for it," unquote. Is the distinguished sponsor aware of this jurisprudence and does he concord with the ruling?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The purpose of House Bill Number 78, like its predecessor in the 17th Congress, is to avoid the nationality provision of the Constitution by making some enterprises fall under public service rather than public utility. Is this the intention?
No, Mr. Speaker, the, the, I do believe that it is, it is to make a more permanent definition and with such definition, whether the world economy changes or how the economy proceeds with technology or any developments, we do believe that we need a definition that is more concrete and more definite. In fact, the jurisprudence cited by the good Congressman Lagman has been incorporated in the proposed bill that we are deliberating right now, that we have cited that for a certain industry to be considered as a public utility, it has to be, there has to be regular supply, directly transmitted and distributed to the public. There is commodities necessary for the maintenance of life and occupation. There is a provide adequate service to the public on demand. This has been consistently, this has been incorporated as well in the, as well as the public, a, the natural monopoly provision. This, all this considerations, or all these decisions Supreme Court, and not just the Supreme Court, also the deliberations of the Constitutional Commission has been considered. It is, the objective is for us to be clear on what is a public utility. We cannot, we have to be consistent in what we consider. And the list can change. The list can stay, the list can be true 10 years ago, but it can change 10 years from now. So what we see as a clear option is to make a definition of what is public utility, distinguishing it from public service because of the constitutional consequences, the, the, the ownership limitation on public utilities. So, Mr. Speaker, the attempt is not to change the interpretation of the Constitution. It is in fact still consistent with the Constitution, but it is more clear and so we, so we can easily adapt to the changes that we are facing every day because the, the technology development and the changes are faster these days. So, Mr. Speaker, I, I, I do stand by the fact that this is not an attempt to change the Constitution. We are trying to be more clear on what we, we deem to be the intention of the Constitution, Mr. Speaker.
Well, if this bill is enacted into law, will a public service corporation be owned and operated 100% by foreigners?
The public service corporations can now not public, that are not public utilities under this amendment would be open for 100% foreign ownership, Mr. Speaker.
It is not only supplementing Filipino capital, but it is the alienization of capital. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, um, by opening, by opening, although we open it to public, to foreign investment, Mr. Speaker, the other restrictions that have been practiced or implemented under the charter or whatever legislation that the regulating agency follows, for example, LTFRB for transportation or CAAP or whichever agency that regulates and issues licenses or franchises will still be in place. Should such agency require, um, more, uh, the, require, should such agency require franchise or any requirements that for them to be authorized to operate as a public service, then that will still apply. What we are merely, that what will be merely affected is the limitation on the 60-40, Mr. Speaker. So it will still be as stringent as before. The ownership will be, although the ownership will be liberalized, Mr. Speaker.
Well, if this bill is not enacted into law, can the, can a common carrier for land, air, or sea be owned and operated by 100% foreign capitalization?
Based on the Constitution, Mr. Speaker, it can be owned by a foreigner 100%, but it cannot be operated by a foreigner, Mr. Speaker.
Where do we get such, uh, the justification for that statement in the Constitution? The Constitution provides that public utilities should be owned and operated by Filipino citizens or corporations, the capital of which is owned at least 60% by Filipinos. It does not make any distinction between ownership and operation?
Mr. Speaker, the Constitution actually states "Operation of public utility." It does not speak about ownership, Mr. Speaker. Uh, operation will be limited to, will be, has a 60-40 limitation, Mr. Speaker. And in fact, based on the TATA case, this has been elaborated as well, Mr. Speaker, that ownership has been distinguished from operation, Mr. Speaker. This is not a proposal from, that you can see in the amendment, but we, I, my, my response is based on the jurisprudence as well as provisions, interpretation of the Constitution, Mr. Speaker.
Well, Section 11 is unequivocal. It provides, "No franchise, certificate, or any other form of authorization for the operation of a public utility shall be granted except to citizens of the Philippines or to corporations or associations organized under the laws of the Philippines, at least 60% of whose capital is owned by such citizen." So the Constitution speaks of both operation and ownership. So I beg to disagree that if this bill is not enacted into law, a common carrier can be owned 100% by foreigners?
Mr. Speaker, this is not a proposal, uh, the, the current bill does not propose that ownership and operation be separated, uh, be distinguished, Mr. Speaker. nor, nor to, do the, um, nor do I propose that there should be a separate. But it is, it is just, I am just stating the decision under the TATA case that it has, it says, "A right to operate a public utility may exist independently of the ownership of the facilities thereof." This is not, this is not something that we have incorporated in the bill. In fact, personally, I do not agree with the decision, but this is a decision of the Supreme Court, Mr. Speaker. I'm just citing the decision under the TATA case, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Why is the concept of ownership of public utilities and/or public service not included in the bill?
Mr. Speaker, we have not, uh, we have not addressed this in the bill. Should, should the good interpreter propose the inclusion of such? Then we can, we can seriously consider the proposal, Mr. Speaker.
I cannot possibly propose that kind of amendment because that will be contrary to the constitutional provision. Well, I, I'm just curious why ownership, the concept of ownership is not included in the bill? There could be no operation, management, and control of an enterprise or business without the antecedent element of ownership. Is it not?
Yes, sir. Um, if we base it on the TATA decision, yes. I get, uh, I believe that a foreigner can actually own the towers and all the facilities of a telecommunications, but the franchise has to be given to a sixty forty entity, Mr. Speaker.
The purpose of not including ownership is to avoid the citizenship requirement of ownership of public utilities under the present Constitution?
May I request the Honorable Lagman to, uh, to wind up his interpellation for his time, Mr. Speaker?
Well, if I am to wind up, it will take me another thirty minutes. I have many more questions. And this is a very important measure. It, uh, uh, would involve the Constitution. But if the, uh, presiding officer would like me to stop already, then I would do so.
Majority Leader.
I move to suspend session, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended.
Okay, di, kaya, titirmanan siya doon, sar solusso, supagod edi. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Session resumed. The Honorable Lagman is reconvened.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, may we ask the distinguished sponsor, what are the major factors which encourage and/or deter the entry of foreign investments?
That would deter entry foreign investments. Basically, in our case, I think it's the sixty forty limitation of the Constitution.
Is that in any way recorded, uh, in any, uh, survey?
Mr. Speaker.
Or the number, or the reasons why investors come to the Philippines or are deterred from coming to the Philippines?
Mr. Speaker, the...
What is the basis, in other words, of that statement of the distinguished sponsor that the sixty forty requirement in favor of Filipino capital is a deterrent to the investment by foreigners?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the, the, um, basis of my answer is on the propos, the findings of the NEDA, uh, also by the DOF, Mr. Speaker, based on their studies on how to, um, improve the growth rate of the Philippines as well as based on the PDP, Mr. Speaker.
Well, that is a NEDA, uh, study or recommendation. But can we be given a copy of that NEDA recommendation or study that the sixty forty requirement in favor of Philippine capitalization is a deterrent to the investment of foreigners?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. We can provide you with several of the sources that we have, like the OECD report, the UTEC report and all that, Mr. Speaker.
And when was that NEDA recommendation or study made?
Upon, uh, basically, Mr. Speaker, upon the, um, uh, during the Sona statement of the President, this was stated. And his statement was to pursue the passage of the amendment of the PSA. Uh, and this was based on the recommendation of the NEDA and their, uh, PDP, Mr. Speaker, together with the DOF, Mr. Speaker.
Does the distinguished sponsor have a copy now of that NEDA study or recommendation?
Uh, currently here, Mr. Speaker, we do not have a copy, but we can provide your office with a copy, Mr. Speaker. These are some of the points, the priority measures in order to, uh, improve the economy of the Philippines. And this is the findings of their studies, Mr. Speaker.
Well, the traditional and recurring factors which encourage or deter entry foreign investments are the following. One, ease of doing business. Two, adequacy of infrastructure. Three, policy of predictability. Four, cost of power. And five, internet speed. These factors do not include the removal of the citizenship or nationality requirement in the Constitution with respect to public utilities. And that is on record. And anytime it could be accessed. These are the factors. But does not include in any way the removal of the citizenship or nationality requirement for certain corporations?
Mr. Speaker, I do agree that those are the variables, Mr. Speaker, but with the influx of foreign direct investment, uh, NEDA believes and our economic managers that if telecommunications will be improved, infrastructure will be improved, this are, this will help us achieve, uh, the correct settings for foreign direct investment, Mr. Speaker.
Whether this bill has any salutary intention, it cannot supplant the Constitution by mere statute. The Constitution has to be amended in accordance with the processes provided for in Article seventeen, where amendments are effected through proposal by a constituent assembly, constitutional convention, and people's initiative. Not one of these modes include an amendment by statute. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, we are not amending the Constitution. We are merely amending the Public Service Act, Mr. Speaker.
Both the Seventeenth Congress and the current Eighteenth Congress, there are many resolutions filed by members of the House to amend the economic provisions of the Constitution, including Section eleven of Article twelve. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
May we know whether the distinguished sponsor is an author or co-author of any of these am mendatory resolutions?
Currently, I am not, Mr. Speaker, uh, and nor am I a member of the committee.
Uh, in the Seventeenth Congress, would the distinguished sponsor recall whether she authored or co-authored an amendment of the Constitution by removing the economic provisions?
I am not sure, Mr. Speaker. I, I, but I do believe I, uh, I, I have supported such movement, Mr. Speaker.
The filing of these resolutions is a clear confirmation that Section eleven of Article twelve, one of the economic provisions in the Constitution, can only be changed, modified, or abandoned by the proper mode of amending the Constitution. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, that would be all, uh, Mr. Speaker. I would, uh, reserve my other, uh, comments, most probably in my vote against this measure on third and final reading.
Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, thank you, distinguished.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to thank Congressman Lagman, who is my last interpreter for this bill. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of interpolation, having no other members wishes to interpolate on the said matter. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number Seventy Eight under Committee Report Number Five. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to greet the guest of the Representative Honorable Rufus Rodriguez of the Second District of Cagan de Oro and the Honorable Christian Onaby of the First District of Misamis Oriental. She is Ms. Mereny Gadiana Raman, Mrs. Philippines World Twenty Nineteen and Mrs. Hawaii Transcontinental Twenty Nineteen.
To the guest of Representative Rufus Rodriguez, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number Seven One One and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill.
House Resolution Number Seven One One entitled, "Resolution Honoring the Heroism, Courage, and Great Compassion of the Ten-Member Philippine Government Team That Repatriated the Distressed Overseas Filipino Workers in Wuhan City, Epicenter of the Outbreak of the COVID-19."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number Seven One One. So move.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to change, refer to the following measures. House Bill Number Three Seven Zero, from the Committee on Social Services to the Committee on Disaster Management. House Bill Numbers Eight Six Eight, Two Two Nine Seven, Five Five One Six, and House Resolution Number Six One Two, from the Committee on Population and Family Relations to the Committee on Welfare of Children. House Bill Number Three Zero Seven One, from the Committees on Trade and Industry and Economic Affairs to the Committees on Economic Affairs and Trade and Industry. House Bill Number Three Two Three Nine, from the Committees on Trade and Industry and Economic Affairs to the Committees on Economic Affairs and Trade and Industry. House Bill Number Four Five One, from the Committees on Ways and Means to the Committee on Appropriations. House Bill Number One Five Four Three, from the Committee on Ways and Means to the Committee on Appropriations. House Bill Number Three One Zero Four, from the Committee on Ways and Means to the Committee on Appropriations. House Bill Number Five Four Five Six, from the Committee on Public Works and Highways to the Special Committee on Flagship Programs and Projects. House Bill Number Five Four Six Six, from the Committee in Agriculture and Food to the Committee on Agri-Agriculture and Fisheries Resources. House Bill Number Six One Five Seven, from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committee on Labor and Employment. House Bill Number Six One Six Two, from the Committee on Government, Enterprises, and Privatization to the Committee on Economic Affairs. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. Motion is approved. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until February Seventeen, Twenty-Twenty, at three o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Session is adjourned.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)